Good evening. My name is John Swanson. I'm going to be starting the school committee meeting for October 8th, 2024. Time is 7:09. Sorry for this late start. We had a little bit of technical difficulty. We have a full committee with the absence of the mayor who will be joining us. He had a conflict of this evening, so he'll be joining us as soon as possible. The meeting is being recorded by our recording secretary, Larbo. It is available via Facebook as well as the WebEx. If you would like to participate in public participation, WebEx is available via the district website. With that, I'd like to start with a moment of silence. And Mr. Olympio, would you like to start us off with that?
Thank you. I'd like to dedicate tonight's moment of silence to Gail Pappas, PBDD resident, wonderful person, wonderful family. She was a graduate of PBDD High School. Her son, Yanni, just graduated this past May, and some of you may know her husband, Tom, who's an elected official as well. Just keep the family in your thoughts and prayers. Again, just a wonderful person and a tragic loss for the community. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. Let's stay in for a moment of silence, and then we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. If there's no objection, I'd just take the agenda out of order and start with the superintendent entry report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. So tonight, we have a special group here tonight, and it's the first of its kind. So I'd like to call up Ms. Elmater and Mr. Fenari before us to represent the Center School. I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I wanted to sort of have an opportunity to bring some of our Center School staff here and be recognized for this amazing accomplishment. So this year, DESI has identified the Center Elementary School as a 2024 School of Recognition. I have looked back, and I do believe this is the first time ever in PBDD. So it's a very big deal. It's a huge credit to the work of our two leaders that we have in front of us and our many staff members who put in, you know, countless hours of dedicated service from preparing the kids in kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade. And what DESI does is they take a look at your accountability data from the previous year, and they set targets for you around attendance, around language proficiency and MCAS scores. And they set all those targets, and they measure how well you do meeting those targets. And, you know, usually a good percentage is somewhere in like the 40 to 60 range, and the Center School was 82% of meeting their targets in 2024. And they look at all the subgroups, and our students exceeded all targets in math, in all grades, in all subgroups. They exceeded all the targets in science, in all, in fifth grade, in all the subgroups as well, and they exceeded all the targets for all the subgroups in chronic absenteeism. So this is a huge accomplishment. I know I have a little bit here on the screen. We have our star student, so I think that's part of the PBIS model and really embracing that idea of high expectations. To the right, you have sort of our theory of action here, where we have high expectations for our kids, and we implemented those rigorous materials with the teachers, gave them some professional learning, and the meetings that they had through the PLCs, meeting with each other, sharing their best practices, and that cycle of learning really contributed to just this incredible achievement. And I wanted to bring the Center School teachers together. This is very unique because they are dispersed throughout the district, sharing the wealth with all the other schools. But I really wanted to take the time to bring everybody together, a nice little reunion, and welcome you back together and just celebrate the incredible work that you've all done. So we have some certificates for everyone, and we can get those off to people just as a little bit of recognition for the great work that you've all done and how wonderful you all were with all of the disruptions last year, with the move, and you've just been wonderful, and I can't say enough about, you know, the staff and how wonderful you've all been. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Elmater and Mr. Fenari if you want to say anything, and I'm sure that all of our committee members have some congratulations to share as well.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. Nino and I are super proud of our entire community, our students, our staff, and our parents for this accomplishment.
Well, thanks. I just really have to say how this accomplishment, it takes a village. It takes the entire Center family that came together every single day for every student, every day. Every single person in that building came together to help our kids, and it's just really amazing to see this accomplishment happen. We truly believe in our teachers and our students, and I'm just incredibly, incredibly proud of all of them. Sorry, I'm getting a little choked up.
Thank you. I want to say, you know, the district is extremely proud of you all. As Dr. Vidal said, you didn't, this wasn't a normal school year for you. There was a lot of emotion going on with y'all. There was a lot of conversations going, but you guys did an excellent, excellent job in excelling and bringing our students to that next level. So from that, and the district, thank you very much. You know, it's phenomenal what you've done. With that, would anybody else like to say a word or any questions? Mr. Miko.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you, Center School. I've said it before, they're a family. I was fortunate, actually, my wife and I were both fortunate to have our two kids going through the Center School. And at the time, when my daughter started, we were having some challenges at home. And I'll never forget the staff and how incredible they were to help us out, but not only us, but all the other families. It was, it was, you would hear it over and over. So I'm not surprised by this here, but I am surprised that it didn't happen before because you guys, you guys and ladies are amazing. So thank you so much for all you do, and keep it up, and hopefully this time next year, we'll all be back to the Center School and do great things. So thank you so much. Well deserved. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I really appreciate the time that you've spent to get us all here. I appreciate you all coming tonight, and thank you for giving us yet another thing to be proud of in PBDD, and thank you so much.
Mr. Olympio.
Thank you. Thank you all for, really, this is the kind of stuff that just warms my heart. I mean, all the craziness going on in the world and all, a lot of negative things, you know, related to education, but this is the stuff that really just makes it fun coming here, and it's why we do this and why you do this, and just, it's really unbelievable. I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. I don't know how to say thank you to all of you because this is huge, and honestly, it is such a pleasure to be able to congratulate you for such an accomplishment. As Ms. Difanari said, it really does take, excuse me, take a village because this is work that you all did with the families and the children, and it just means so much to be able to really put a, you know, put a star on all of you to say thank you for what you did with the kids and for yourselves. And I'd like to say one other thing. This is a great night, and you have a wonderful honor, but I'll tell you, the best part so far was watching how happy all of you were to be together again, and that was great to see how close you all are, and I think that makes a big difference and is part of what made you succeed above and beyond so many other schools in the state of Massachusetts. So thank you, and enjoy, enjoy the limelight. You deserve it.
Thank you. Wow, wow, look at you. Look at you. I've known a lot of you for a long, long time. We have three committee members who are Center School parents. Ms. Carpenter may not admit it anymore, but she is a Center School parent. I took, I took a walk, I took a walk through your school November 2022. We were looking at some problems in that school, and it amazed me how much that school deteriorated since my children had been there. It was in bad shape then, but I saw ceiling tiles that were stapled and screwed and glued and falling down around you. We had to close a room because of conditions. There were air quality conditions, there were mold issues, there were specials taking place on the stage in the gym cafeteria, auditorium, you know, whatever we called that. And here we are today, celebrating you, celebrating you for your talents and your perseverance and what you're able to do with our kids, and it is a testament to how professional you all are and how you really take this profession seriously, and you care. It starts with caring. I saw it when my kids are there. You taught my daughter how to care on your side of the table now, so good for you. Congratulations. I kind of said to Nino earlier that this did sound like a family reunion. I didn't want to come over and interrupt anybody, even though I want to say hi to all of you, and we'll take a recess after this so we can do that, but it did sound great to hear you all together, and it's nice to see you all in the same room or the same building again. Congratulations. This isn't something, I know we don't take it lightly. Please don't think, you know, you're getting, you're going to get a certificate tonight. What we believe in that you've done is so much more than a certificate, but it's what we have to offer you. So please take this. It's a feather that you keep with you forever. Congratulations.
Well, hello, everybody. So I'm a little bit late. I was at a girls' soccer game, but I really, I thought about just staying home because we lost, but I really wanted to come today because, because I knew that all of you were coming in, and I really wanted to congratulate you as well. I know people have spoken, but I just wanted to offer my congratulations and thanks to all of you for the work you do. It's important, and you've made a difference, so thank you. Did anybody else not get a chance to speak yet that wanted to?
All right. Well, condolences, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy that, I am happy that the Center School teachers can bring some joy to your night as they have brought joy to us over the past year. So I'd like you all just to come up, and we could just do a quick photo with the mayor, and we'll give you guys some certificates, and there'll be more to come, but this is, as Mr. Hawkman said, this is just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you. All right. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We have some more guests here today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Vidal, turn it back to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have some friends from St. John the Baptist Elementary School, and they are here seeking a request to expand their early childhood programming from 2.9 down to two years. And so I'll turn it over to you. If you can just introduce yourself to the committee and just tell a little bit about the request, and there may be some questions from the committee.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Vidal, Mayor Button Court, School Committee. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I'm Val Shippen. I'm principal of St. John the Baptist School.
And I'm Roseanne Osmani. I'm the preschool director at St. John the Baptist.
The reason we're here tonight is there have been a couple of things that have happened for us that have changed our needs. So we are 2.9, as Dr. Vidal has said. We're looking at going to two years old because we've had six of our families interested in enrolling their children who are between two and 2.9 years old for the ease of having one drop-off for their children. And also financially, they're a bit strained with the current daycare their children are in. And also, we had a benefactor come forward this summer and donate a bathroom on the second floor of our facility. It was amazing, so we feel much better able to meet the needs of younger children. So we are looking at only increasing by eight students and two teachers. So it would be eight children, two years, between two and 2.8. And in order to do that, we need a letter of approval from all of you. We need that permission. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for coming. I appreciate any type of early childhood enrollment, enrichment, addition. Childcare is not easy nowadays, nor is the staffing, so thank you for that. I do have some questions around this. Right now, you have, I looked at your website, I'm not sure if it's up to date, it says you have a three-year-old classroom and a four-year-old classroom. Is that right?
We have, we accept students from 2.9 to 5.11. That's what, what we're allowed right now. And we have two classrooms that are dedicated to 2.9, to those turning, those three and turning, you know, four. And then we have two dedicated four-year-old programs, and we have a kindergarten transition classroom for the students who have missed the September 1st cutoff.
Those classrooms, are they approved through us or were they EEC?
They're EEC.
So if, so you're licensed through EEC for these other, what'd you say? You have four classrooms?
Two threes, two fours, and one kindergarten transition.
And we recently renovated another room, so we're, we have a room that could be dedicated to the two, to 2.8.
So wouldn't you go through EEC again to get the two-year-olds?
They had requested that we come through the city first.
So you're doing both?
Yeah. They had requested that we come through you and get an updated letter from the city of PBDD, and then they would, they would come in and they would look at our facility again and move forward.
So you, so you have a licenser through EEC?
We have, she is a licenser. We're, we're non-licensor, licensed, we're a non-licensor program.
This is just the first step in a long process.
So you're exempt from EEC licensing?
We're exempt from EEC licensing, but we do have an EEC licenser that comes out and inspects our building, makes requests, modifications, maintains, comes in, maintains, make sure our files are maintained, med forms are in, square footage. She assigns our ratios based on classroom sizes.
Okay. So for the two-year-olds, will they have their own classroom, or are you going to blend them into the 2.9s?
They would, they do, we do have a dedicated space for them that is already approved for up to 18 children, but obviously, the space is up for eight, for 18 children, but we would not put 18 children in that classroom.
So that classroom?
Eight would be max.
Would be two-year-olds, and then when they hit 2.9, three-years-old, they'll move over to your three-year-old?
One of our two three-year-old classrooms, yeah.
And does that have diapering in it, in the classroom? You said you have a new bathroom?
We, we do. We have a separate area for diapering.
Okay. And what about your playground space? How will that look because they're still young? Do you have?
We do. We have a playground. We were able, in March, and it is, it follows, they came out, they measured, they followed EEC guidelines, so our playground fits in with their requirements.
So it's separate from like where the five-year-olds play? Is it separate?
Everybody has a separate recess.
They have a separate recess? Do they play on the same equipment?
They do play on the same equipment, but it's all very, it's not, yeah, it's not. Everything is within height falls. We have the six-foot barrier. We have the nine inches of mold. We have, we have everything.
And the teachers that are in there, are those EEC licensed teachers?
Yes.
Well, this is wonderful. I just say thank you for increasing, and I know it's, childcare is hard to find nowadays, so I'm really happy to hear that you're increasing that and helping families out, and I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Appreciate you asking those questions. I am a proud St. John School alum, and, yes, I am, and I appreciate and thank you for the work that you do. You have wonderful people there, wonderful staff that, you know, I, again, I greatly appreciate your work, so I'm certainly in full support of this and appreciate your efforts. Any other questions, Mrs. Dunn?
Sorry. Actually, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee approve a letter of authorization for the St. John the Baptist preschool program for the two-year-olds classes.
We really appreciate that.
Second?
Terrific. You've heard the motion for approval made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote for approval, please.
Mr. Hawkman, Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, and so we'll work with you in March, and we'll help, we'll get the letter going tomorrow, and we'll get that off to you so we don't hold you up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, we're going to go back to the agenda, go back to item number two, the minutes. We do have minutes from the September 24, 2024 regular school committee meeting. I'd open those up for discussion and/or a vote.
Motion to accept and approve.
Thank you for the motion for approval of the September 24, 2024 regular school committee meeting minutes made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson? Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes. Terrific, thank you. Next, we'll go to approval of bills. We do have four warrants. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Olympio.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5829 in the amount of $660,553.81 dated October 8, 2024, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5829, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Abstain.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5842 in the amount of $1,367,105.14 dated October 8, 2024, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5842. Motion was seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Abstain.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5845 in the amount of $140,576.16 dated October 8, 2024, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5845, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5847 in the amount of $193,883.19 dated October 8, 2024, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympio for approval of warrant number 5847, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Next, we'll go to item number four, Continued Business. Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it over to you. Any report on the Welch School MSBA project?
Very excited that next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. at the Welch School, the MSBA will be coming out to help with the ribbon-cutting on the new building, and you're all invited to attend. It should be a really very nice time and a great milestone in the history of the Welch. And it folds in very nicely with planning some things down the line for the 50th anniversary of the Welch. So this ends something and starts something.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any questions, comments? Okay. Dr. Vidal, we'll go back to you. I think there's a few remaining items for your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So jumping to item number three, the PBD Veterans Memorial High School MSBA Project. Can't say that enough. We're very excited about it. Very happy to report that our first deliverable to MSBA was sent and accepted prior to the September 30th deadline, and that was the formation of the School Building Committee. So we will be having our first meeting in the coming months. We have three more deliverables that are due by the end of this month, October 30th. The first one is Design Enrollment Projection. So Mayor Bettencourt and Mrs. Dunn and I met with Mr., with Dr. Higgins on Friday of last week. We went over the forms and what we need to do. So our goal is to complete the first draft of the forms by October 15th, and then have them ready for review for the School Committee at the next School Committee Meeting, and then we will submit them prior to the October 30th deadline. So we have a Design Enrollment Projection, which is just a lot of information that we already have. So Ms. Markarelli and I are putting this together, historical enrollment data, the city births. One thing we're gonna work with City Hall is to get the building permits and housing sales. I think we got the housing sales today, so we're just looking at building permits. Then we will complete the education plan, so I'll work with Ms. Randall on that. District-wide facilities, our current educational spaces, and the proposed educational spaces. So talking about some of the science labs that we want and some of the different programming, and then talk about some of the community engagement activities that we'll be having in the coming months, in the next three to six months. And then we also have a Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education Viability Documentation, and that gives us an overview of the current programs that we have, and also an exploration of new programs. So Dr. Kelly and Ms. Espinoza will be working together to complete that document, and it's not a heavy lift. It's only a few pages of information, and it's to explore some new programming. We're not tied into anything, but we'll be able to talk about, you know, what we've done with Mass Hire and some of the additional programs that we'd like to do in conjunction with the Salem Public Schools and Essex North Shore to make sure that we're not competing with programs, but we're supplementing each other. And if there is an over-enrollment in one program and there is a need in the community, that we'd be able to offer that as well. So we're working on that, and, you know, we're very excited about it, happy to answer any questions or if the mayor has any comments about the meeting that we had on Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. No, I think you gave an excellent summary. Any questions or comments? Terrific. Thank you.
Great. And the final two items on the superintendent's report are just two donations. We have a donation of gift cards from Five Guys to the Brown School, and so we're very happy to share those with our students and families as prizes for, you know, a job well done. And so the PTO is working with the Building Administration on that. And we have a donation for the Carroll School for Rack Room Shoes. They have a program called Shoes That Fit, and they donated nearly $3,000 to the Carroll School to buy shoes and whatnot for kids in need. So there's some information in the written communications as well, but entertain a motion to accept these with gratitude, and we'll send a letter on behalf of the School Committee.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept with gratitude both donations and, you know, to thank those two organizations, because these are really very nice donations. So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Swanson. That's a unanimous vote, all in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay. Next, we'll go to public participation. Is there anyone here today that would like to come forward and speak? The microphone is open. Seeing no one, do we have anyone that would like to join us virtually?
Seeing none online.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to written communications. We have a number of written communications today. I'd like to see if we could have a motion to receive the following written communications. Number one, a letter from St. John's the Baptist School Early Childhood Center. Number two, the Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education Viability Documentation MSBA Form. Number three, the School District Educational Profile Questionnaire MSBA Form. Number four, the donation, Brown School gift cards from Five Guys. Number five, donation to Carroll School Rack Room Shoes, Shoes That Fit Program. Number six, September 2024 Student Attendance Report. And number seven, the Bay State Textile September 2024 Report.
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote for approval of acceptance of those written communications?
Mr. Hockman.
Yes.
Mr. Swanson.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Olympio.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions on any of those? I think we've touched on a number of them. Okay, next, we'll go to Subcommittee Reports. Start us off, the Education Subcommittee, Mr. Amico.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday night, this Thursday night, on October 10th, from 6:30 to 8:30, PBD Veterans Memorial High School will be hosting the annual college fair. So there are a lot of great colleges and universities, both public and private, attending, and it is open to the public. And I know we have a great senior class this year and a wonderful junior class as well, and I can't wait to list and name all those great colleges that they'll be attending like I do every year at the end of graduation. So if you're in the area, please put this on your calendar, this Thursday evening on October 10th from 6:30 to 8:30 at the PBD Veterans Memorial High School. I believe it's in the, excuse me, in the gymnasium, gymnasium. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. I know that's one of your favorite moments, reading off those list of colleges every year. That's great.
Love it. It beats this haircut. We'll talk about it later.
Okay, thank you. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Olympio.
Nothing new to report right now.
Thank you. School Safety?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman.
Thank you. I just want to really talk a little bit about the manner in which our school district, our high school in particular, our athletic teams and coaches, and our students have really come together to support themselves, each other, the Espinal family, really rallying behind the tragic event that took place a few weeks ago. I was able to get to the football game last Friday, and it was just a, you know, really a heartwarming expression by the whole student body, the entire staff and faculty, for a family that's suffering greatly. And so this is the wellness side of the athletics and wellness, which I don't talk about too much. And it's good to see that there are a lot of supports that are in place, that are in place in the school, in the district, and a lot of lessons that our kids have learned to put, help them through a very, very difficult time.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. On that topic, Mr. Swanson.
Sorry. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd also like to thank the other surrounding communities and towns and school districts as well. I don't know if it's well-known that Mr. Espinal was well, he got out and was around. He was very involved in community, and we had a lot of outreach for our school systems, for our public officials, and the Police and Fire Department, making sure they were okay by other communities as well. So I'd like to publicly thank the communities that also supported our athletics department, our school districts, and our community as a whole. So for those that reached out, please accept our thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson, for mentioning that as well. Mr. Olympio?
Yes, since we're on the subject, last week, the Espinal family reached out to me, and they were asking if they were thinking about, with some of the money that they received in donations, they were wondering if they could maybe put some type of bench, a memorial in honor of Freddie. And I asked, well, in the perfect world, where would you like that to be located? And the preliminary talks with the family were that they were thinking about the Welch. So I just don't know who would I tell the family to, you know, get in contact with, what's the process? And if you could just give me some direction on that, that'd be great.
And thank you, Mr. Olympio, for bringing that forward. I, I suggest you and I talk as well as maybe reaching out to Jen Davis, Park and Rec Director, potentially putting something at the Welch School or on the field near there, maybe at one of the ball fields might be a good location. And we can certainly talk to the Espinal family about a specific location. If it's gonna be on school property, obviously that would have to be discussed. We would have to obviously bring Dr. Vidal in and his team, Mrs. Massa and everyone. But if it's on more in the park, that's something certainly Jen Davis could be a part of, and, you know, certainly I would like to help with that.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll get a clarification, and certainly we can talk, and, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
And I, I know the Welch School would love to have something there. They are just really distraught, like everyone. They have such great memories of Freddie, and it would be something really very nice to have on the grounds. The, the process for anything on school grounds is you include the school council, the school advisory council. So that's another group to bring in, but I think something beautiful could be created there for him. And we are still, we still have a little bit to work through with the Welch, because there were some, some memorials have stayed on the property and some haven't and kind of need to be re-discussed and re-decided on. So this is the perfect time to have that discussion take place.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. So we'll follow up with you, Mr. Olympio, but I think we all want to be a part of that. Okay. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report tonight.
Parent and Student Advisory Boards?
Okay. Parent Advisory Board meeting will take place on Thursday, October 24th, here at the Higgins. That notice has gone out to the family members, I'm sorry, to the parent advisory board members. And then I'm happy to say we have a new advisor for the student advisory board, so it should begin to pick up again. They were in a little bit of flux with a change that was coming, and I just got word this week that the new advisor is in place. So I'm hoping to reach out to that faculty member and offer to come up with some of the materials that I have for the advisory board, and the kids should, the students should be back here within a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and Grounds, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I think most of this report was taken care of by the superintendent, his report.
Terrific. Thank you. Special Education Subcommittee, Mr. Olympio?
Yeah, I'll be scheduling a meeting within the next few weeks, but on October 24th, Thursday morning at Breaking Grounds, CPAC will have an open forum meeting with, for parents at 9:15 a.m. That's a Thursday morning at Breaking Grounds, October 24th. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olympio. City Council on Legislative Delegation, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. We met this evening at 6:30. In attendance was myself, Mr. Swanson, Dr. Vidal, and Ryan Melville, Councillor-at-Large. The topic was elections in schools. We discussed being flexible with our calendar to possibly have a no-school day and working with the union regarding that for any future elections. One of the concerns that was brought up, in addition to that, was the setup before and the breakdown after so that there was no interruption of the school day for our students. Breaking down was not a problem. They seemed to clean up everything at night, but they were coming in the, during the school day, the day before, to set up. So we are working with, we asked Mr. Melville if he could go back and see what the process was. We're gonna connect to see if we can somehow avoid that and maybe have them come in at 3:00. We were happy to hear that they are gonna be hiring an elections coordinator. I guess that was approved in the budget, so that would be somebody that we can reach out to in the future. We did make a plan to meet after any type of elections, to try to stay on top of any issues, try to make sure that we can have a smooth process. But I think that, you know, moving forward, we have a good plan to try to make this work for everybody, and I'll update you once we find out about this elections coordinator and how we're gonna handle the setting up so that it doesn't interrupt our school day.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Redistricting, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. And Performing Arts, Mr. Swanson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met with Mr. Simmons this past week, gave me some really good news. We weren't able to meet earlier in the school year, so he kind of brought me up to speed on a lot. Casting for Stage One's fall play, our musical has been set. We're not gonna announce that yet, because I guess what I learned this year is there's a lot of licensing that has to happen on the back end with these, with these, with these musicals. So we're gonna keep that name in a rap, but the casting has been put in place. They're looking to perform, start their performance the second week in December, which we're gonna be getting excited for, another great musical for us. Numbers this year, the eighth grade is looking strong. That's a year that, that's a really good thing, because we had a lot of kids who came out of Higgins. We're starting out in COVID, but the numbers looking good at the eighth grade, which means we're gonna have really good growth within our high school numbers as well. And when speaking of numbers, one of the things that really, I was really happy with was they saw a really good take with the introduction of instruments in fifth grade, which means the sixth grade, they, they had a higher take rate. And they're gonna keep tweaking that program to make sure they keep developing students and that they have, continuously have good take rates as they come into the middle of school first year. It also allows, with that program, also allows the middle school to adjust their programming as well for stronger bands and stronger choruses as they continue on. And the last one, as I know we like to speak about our students that are in school, but I'm not sure if y'all read the great news, one of our alumni moved down to New York City this year, and it was cast with his, as Albus Potter, the son of Harry Potter, on Broadway, Alex Serino. So he's starting off well, so we wish him luck.
That's terrific. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to Mr. Swanson. Yeah, that was great news about Alex. I know in last year, perhaps, we talked about strings being introduced to our musical program. Do you know if there's any developments on that?
It is something that we've, we've discussed with Mr. Simmons right now. It's, it's, that has to be a planned-out kind of thing. The way that our, our staffing and the way that they develop is, is towards the winds, the ridge, and something we have to discuss in the long term, plan that one out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Yeah, I, I don't want to lose sight of this. I know it's something that we've talked about. I know Ms. Dunn has felt passionately about this as well. Perhaps we can form some sort of Subcommittee of the Subcommittee and get the proper people involved, because I don't wanna, and, and I thank you for your response. It takes a lot of people to get this off the ground. It's a lot of work. There's staff involved, there's... this off the ground, it's a lot of work, there's staff involved, there's costs involved and things like that, I don't want to, I'd like to, two years from now, talk about the terrific string section that we have in the, in the band or in the, in the music department, so let's, let's work on this.
If you don't mind, if you'd like, I can pull together a, a meeting with anybody that would like to join, and I have Mrs. Jones and Mr. Simmons come in and explain the programs as we have it, and it'd be awesome to go from a band to an orchestra, it'd be great, so we can discuss.
Terrific, thank you both. Mrs. Dunn, comment?
It would be wonderful, and since we're looking at a new building, it's something to bring up when we're discussing the walls and buildings and classrooms at that new high school, so we will keep this in mind always.
Okay, excellent. New business, I did want to turn it over to Dr. Vidal for a comment or item you wanted to bring up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Huckman, yesterday was a very difficult day for many of our families, October 7th was the one-year anniversary of the terrorist attacks on Israel, and he worked, and Mr. Huckman worked with Mayor Betancourt to put on a ceremony yesterday that was really an incredible ceremony, it was, it was a great way for the community to come together, the outpouring of support and the, the amount of people that came was, was really inspiring, and I was very impressed with how the program was set up, it was very thoughtful, and incorporated three of the, of the prominent rabbis in the community, and it really offered an opportunity for people to come together, to sing the Israeli national anthem, and, you know, there was a solemn moment and a remembrance, but then there was a message of hope, and a message of, of peace, and, and how we move forward together, and I was really impressed with it, and it was very thoughtful, I know Mr. Huckman put a lot of work into it, and you could really tell from, from, from the program, and Mayor Betancourt said some amazing words as well, and it was, it was just really a, a nice day and a nice ceremony, and I know some people were really worried about yesterday, and it just made me really proud of, of the City of Peabody and our community and how they came together, so I just wanted to thank Mr. Huckman for that.
Please, Mr. Huckman.
Thank you, I wasn't planning on talking about this, but thank you, Dr. Vidal, it's not lost on me where we live and who we're governed, who, who the members of our local government are, I mean, yesterday was a good day for Peabody, it was a good day for people to get together, it was an opportunity to reflect and also collectively put our hope together for freeing of hostages and peace, peace and security throughout the world, but that doesn't happen without the mayor. The mayor's someone who, I'm proud to be a constituent of his, because when I asked the mayor about a program at City Hall for October 7th, his response was, of course, and I think he gave me that response before I finished the question, and that doesn't happen everywhere, we're, we're really, really fortunate, not just in the United States, but in the City of Peabody, to be able to peacefully express thoughts and ideas on public property with the government's consent, if you will, I mean, it's part of, you know, Bill of Rights, we get to form peacefully with permitting and with proper consent, and that's significant, and that happens here, you know, pretty liberally, and I'm, for one, grateful for that, so thank you, Mayor, for, for your support for the program, your efforts and your contributions to the program. Dr. Vidal, thank you, words that are unnecessary, but I appreciate them, and I'm just glad that we got through yesterday here in Peabody and in the North Shore, and certainly in Massachusetts, from what I understand, peacefully. There were no major events that occurred here, which I'm, I'm also extremely happy for, it was a night, the night of the 6th into the 7th wasn't well-slept because of concerns that may, may happen, whether they be in schools or in cities or towns, so I'm happy that there's nothing to that to report, and again, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be able to be a very, 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 very small cog in that wheel.
Terrific, thank you very, thank you both very much for those comments, it was a wonderful ceremony that I was proud to be part of. Okay, our next Regular School Committee Meeting is two weeks from tonight, which will be October 22nd, 2024, starting at 7:00 p.m. right here in our Higgins Middle School Library. Any items that would like to be added to the agenda, please, as we typically do, just notify Dr. Vidal and I, and thank you for a very good meeting, everyone, thank you.